And we have all members present. First thing we're gonna do is have a moment of silence at the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna move agenda item number five up to here at three, which is the corrections or additions and approval of the agenda. And then I'm also gonna ask that we add an item thirteen down here below the sale of surplus items. It'll be actually fourteen. And then the director's report will be fifteen and so on. But what we're gonna add is a North Stewart Elementary roof discussion and approval. Will be item fourteen. And what I'm gonna ask for is, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the agenda as changed. Motion by Mr. Lamb? Second by Ms. Fitch here. All right, so that's gonna pass. Now, item number, now before, oh, I'm sorry, that's right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Yes, let's have it. All right, we've changed the agenda. All right, item number three is the recognition of the FCC LA national champions, Saren Thompson and Emma Gillum. No, I'm just kidding.
Good afternoon, I'm Saren Thompson.
And I'm Emma Gillum.
Come to school. It will be cool. We'll laugh and play and learn all day while making new friends. The fun never ends. So don't stay away, come to school every day.
It is extremely important to come to school each and every day for each and every student. At school, children are given the opportunity to learn academics, develop socially and emotionally, and develop fine and gross motor skills. These skills are especially important in kindergarten as this sets the foundation for a student's future success in school. However, due to the unfortunate circumstances of COVID-19, many parents may have forgotten the importance of school attendance.
A toilet paper shortage isn't the only trouble that COVID brought. Nearly one in five students were chronically absent during the COVID pandemic. What did that mean? Schools had to cut back on the currency letter since kids were getting quarantine left in rank. After all the chaos, we began to focus on attendance again. And three years later, nearly one in six students are chronically absent. What is chronic absenteeism? The U.S. Department of Education tells us that it means that a student misses 15 days of a school year. We know children who are absent from school much more than 15 days during COVID.
According to the Jonathan Attridge of the Tennessee Department of Education, although the average daily attendance rate of Tennessee students is 95%, almost 45,000 or 10% of Tennessee K through 3 students missed at least a month's worth of school days during the 2014 through 15 school year. In fact, the vast majority of the approximately 900 elementary schools in Tennessee has at least 5% of chronically absent students.
Not much progress has been made in Tennessee as of the 2014 and 15 school year. In a publication from the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury in March of 2021, Dana Brum concludes, "State chronic absenteeism rates remain steady over the three years analyzed in the report, dropping slightly from 13.6% in 2017 to 13.3% in 2018, and finally to 13.1% in 2019." Although the rates have seemed to be making a steady decline, they were higher in 2021 than in 2014 and 15.
With this data, we decided we wanted to combat the effects of COVID on a more local level. We set our goal as an early proactive intervention to raise awareness of chronic absenteeism to teachers, parents, and caregivers, and also to improve the attendance at our local Dover Elementary School.
After speaking to our fundamentals of education teacher, we sat down to brainstorm. Knowing we needed a gimmick that was child-friendly, we stumbled upon an old bear costume from a previous club, and the There Bear idea came to be.
There Bear would be our encouragement and our mascot. But most importantly, he would be a friend to the kindergarteners, and we already had an idea for the perfect friendly candidate. We coordinated with the Dover Elementary School kindergarten class of Ms. Amanda Cook, but we weren't quite ready yet.
With our where, when, and how identified, we needed a detailed what as to what we were going to be doing. Luckily, we were able to talk to some amazing educators in our school system. With their help, we were able to devise a conductible lesson and program that kindergarten students could understand and enjoy.
Before we put our plan in motion, we sent out parent letters describing who and what There Bear was and explaining our goals for this project. Our fundamentals teacher mentioned that parents may think that their child in particular was not attending school. So we made it very clear that this project was not directed towards any specific child and that it was aimed to provide instruction on the importance of attending school daily in the establishment of good habits.
Moving on, our plan was to visit or speak to the students via email, letter, or video at least once a week. On days that we would visit, we would teach them about attendance, ask them comprehension questions, and sing our song. Days that we had to communicate virtually, we focused on refreshing the students' memories of what we were doing, giving them positive affirmations, and reminding them that There Bear was counting on them.
On Fridays, we sent home coloring pages that encouraged students to come to school based on something There Bear liked. These coloring pages were to be colored at home with a parent as suggested by our family resource director. The parent and child would read and answer the questions as well as put their names and signature on the paper before turning it in on Monday.
The purpose for these pages to be worked on at home was to bring attendance to the attention of caregivers and parents. Along with this, caregivers and parents can encourage their students to not only come to school, but to also get their work done on time. It was a win-win situation, and these kindergarteners were introduced to the concept of responsibility. We believe that this skill would continue to be built, seeing as it began at a young age. These pages got collected every two to three weeks by our fundamentals teacher.
We handed out our first coloring pages on January 20th, but didn't stop until March 3rd. Our very first lesson taught the kids what attendance was, what being absent meant, what was considered good and bad, what was considered good or bad attendance, and why it was important to come to school. They were very cooperative when we asked interactive questions and were very receptive to the information we provided.
The three main points on the importance of coming to school were, one, to meet new people, two, to see new surroundings, and three, to learn. We have been taught in our education classes that children learn by doing. This constructive approach means children must have hands-on opportunities and be exposed to people who can teach skills to them. By experiencing different environments in school, they can learn what things are, how to behave, and start thinking about the world around them. By meeting new people, they are advancing their social-emotional skills and learning to communicate with others. And of course, in a school setting, they will get to learn the academic standards from caring adults that will help them continue on to the next group.
We made it part of our mission to ask the students questions that related to our main concept. We asked them, should you come to school every day? Why is it important to come to school? And more questions about the meaning of being absent and attendance.
The responses at first were a little weak. Essentially, their answers, excuse me, amounted to eating snacks and playing. After considering their responses, we facilitated their thought process and tried scaffolding their answers to more correct ones. About halfway through, the answers were more directed towards learning and meeting new people.
The song at the beginning of our presentation was to help the kindergarteners retain these concepts. We sent it to their teacher to sing with them. It became a regular request before we left, and we eventually made it a routine thing.
Knowing the importance of reinforcing behavior in order to establish good habits, we planned to reward the kids at least once a week to keep their spirits high and minds from wandering. We gave the students gummy bears, bookmarks, and Teddy grams. These positive reinforcements were given every Monday to set a happy mood for the week.
As our There Bear project was coming to an end, we knew we needed to plan a little last hurrah. We finished during the Read Across America Week and decided to read them the book Going on a Bear Hunt. They copied our moves along with There Bears and were sad to see him go. As a goodbye trinket, There Bear handed out little bear keychains that symbolized what There Bear taught them.
Now looking at the statistics, the attendance in Dover Elementary kindergarten during November 11th through December 12th was 85.30%. At this point in the year, we had not gone to the school once or even told them about our plan. On December 13th through January 25th, the attendance rate got to 92.34%, meaning an increase in impressive 7% within the short time we were there. Finally, January 26th through March 1st, it went to 92.36%. There was not as much growth as last time, but the numbers stayed consistent. At the beginning of this 2022-23 school year, the numbers were all over the place. It was a numerical roller coaster. So it was thrilling to see some consistency in the percentages of attendance.
We are extremely proud to say that our goals were met. Looking back, we definitely should have had better preparation. We manipulated our charts too a lot for any unexpected events, but failed to make a backup plan for days we were called out of school, and it resulted in an eight-week period rather than a six-week period.
We are very grateful that these students participate in our program. Being at school enables five and six-year-olds to practice. They develop gross motor skills and fine motor skills.
They also advanced the learning in two-step commands, memory, imagination, language, listening to instructions, and responsibility. These underlying skills were integrated all throughout our There Bear curriculum.
As to the future of There Bear, there are a lot of things to consider. This is still a work in progress, I'm sorry. But from the results of this project, we can see that an expanding future for There Bear is definitely possible. Perhaps you can reach out to other schools in Tennessee or even cross state lines to help schools all over America.
Till then, we thank you for your time, and we hope that our very good attendance left you with a very good impression.
You girls did great, that was awesome.
Very good.
That was much better than the letter "Mike's at home without attendance."
Y'all represent us well, that's awesome. I don't know if we've ever had, I don't know if we've ever had a national champion, really, of anything. And Abby, great job, I mean.
Me, too, played a big role in that. But I do think with FCC LA and the job that they did, I think that is something that if the school has a need, FCC LA focuses really on community and how we can help that. So that is just simple, just a one little something of one project that we have done and that can clearly continue to grow in their next couple of years. And I think that it really could become maybe a mascot or something for our school system. But we've got plenty more of opportunity to look into.
Great job, thank y'all. All right, moving on to item four, public comment. There was no sign-in, so we'll skip that. Next item is the approval of the minutes. Y'all have received a copy of Regular Session July 13, 2023, in your board packets earlier last week. Is there any, if there's no objections or corrections, I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Ms. Sanders?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gillum. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Yes, let's have it. All right, item number seven is a consent agenda. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pusso. Any questions about that, about the consent agenda? All right, if there's no questions, then I'll, I'm gonna ask, let's just, let's just, all those in favor for approval of the consent agenda, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, the yeses have it. All right, item number eight is the approval of the 142 budget amendments. I'm gonna seek a motion for the approval of the budget amendments. Motion by Ms. Fitch?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. All right, let's talk about that a little bit.
If it's okay with Dr. Duncan, Federal Programs Director, if you can tell them what these amendments are about, please.
Yes, sir. The first one is just for three years, the state has provided a reimbursement for teachers who attend literacy training on the summer. This past summer, we had one teacher that attended that, so that's just amended the budget for the $1,000 stop and for them attending that training. The second, S R 3, that's just for carryover, making an adjustment to the budget we approved in the spring, the original budget adjusted for the carryover this fall. And then my last one there was, the original budget had, you know, for regular instruction equipment, $722, $1,600. The state had me put that money into line 790, so just moving that money from $722 to $790.
All right, are there any questions? Can you get a roll call on that?
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch, you, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yeah.
All right, that passes. Item number nine is the approval of the ARP budget. I'll seek a motion to approve the ARP budget.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pusso. All right, discussion.
Ms. Crane?
Yes.
Can you explain what that is?
This is the remaining balance of my American Relief Plan money that they gave me from COVID. Just $6,678 left. I have till September 30th to allocate it and spend it, so I'm just carrying it over.
Is there any questions about that? All right, I'll ask for a roll call on that as well.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Pusso?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
All right, that passes. All right, item number 10 is discussion approval of S R 3.0 Safe Return, Safe Return Plan, sorry. I'll seek a motion for the approval of that S R 3.0 Safe Return Plan. Motion by Ms. Sanders?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. All right, let's talk about that.
Hey, we, this is the last one of these we're gonna have to do. This is, every six months, right? Dr. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
It's in your packet, it just goes through what we said we were going to do and our spending plan, and that just goes into detail the different ways that we have done that. It hasn't changed much since the original plan. Is there anything I'm leaving out, Dr. Duncan?
No, no, sir. If anyone had any questions, answer them, but.
We're about, this is the end of it. End of the federal money is laying this year, the S R money. It's been nice to have it, but I'm kinda happy it's going away because it's a lot to it.
Is there any questions?
Hey, Dr. Duncan, is this accessible online? I'm guessing it is.
It will be after you, well, online right now is the one for February, so.
Did you hear that question? All right, all those in favor for the approval of the S R 3.0 Safe Return Plan, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, the yeses have it. Item number 11 is discussion approval of S R 3.0 Public Plan.
And this is the, this is how we're going to expand, spend the rest of the 3.0 money. It's in your packet, we are.
I'm gonna cut you off real fast. I'm gonna seek a motion for the approval of it. That's all right. I'm gonna seek a motion for the approval of 3.0. Ms. Fitch, you, first?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pusso. All right, now we discuss it.
Total Rating Funds, 2.2 million, correct, Dr. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
And that's the North Stewart project that's coming out of that, correct? So that's probably gonna be down to about a billion. And then it goes through where we're gonna be spending the rest of that money. We'll answer any questions if you have any. So is this the last year for interventions?
Out there will be funded through S R.
Yes. And we have been informing the employees, and we've been encouraging them whenever a regular position comes open to apply, because we've had some great interventions. And we're gonna study real hard to try to, maybe not to the extent that we have them now, but you know, that's part of our plan going forward is to have more help in those classrooms. Because they did great.
Is there any other questions? All right, all those in favor for the approval of the S R 3.0 Public Plan, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Yes, let's have it. All right, item number 12 is discussion and approval of the train proposal. I'm gonna seek a motion for the approval of the train proposal.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. I know that we talked about this during our session before this meeting here for informational purposes, but is there any questions?
Can we add this to the Stewart County school system page a little older that everybody can look at? I understand that it's quite a bit in here, but I think it's, it'll help to.
It's available online, I think.
Randy said that he was gonna get it to us, so yeah, we'll hopefully get it.
We can do it on the, like, trial.
If we approve.
If it's approved, yeah. Yeah, we can do that. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's possible.
Is there any other questions? Seek a roll call.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes.
Mr. Pusso?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yeah.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Train proposal passes.
Get to work.
Get to work. Item number 13 is the sale of surplus items. I'm gonna seek a motion for us to sell the surplus items?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pusso?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sanders. Discussion, what we got here?
That would be computer desk stations, there's 10 of those. Student desk boarding and student chairs boarding will make you a good deal of them. They're going on gun deals, so they'll be up for auction.
Mike, do you think they'll sell or do we need to approve to let them be discarded if they don't?
I don't know. They'll sell. Somebody, believe it or not, most everything we put out there, they buy.
They might get it for a dollar.
They buy all of it for a dollar, and they'll sell the scrap in the middle of the yard. They buy stuff.
He runs up deals 24/7 buying stuff.
All right, any more discussion about the sale of surplus items? You get a, you get a roll call on that.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Ms. Easton Lang?
Yes.
Yes. All right, item number 14 was the one that we added. That was the discussion and the approval of the North Stewart roof. I'll seek a motion for the approval of going forward with our high bid to not exceed $96,000 for the additional monies required to finish the roof. That would be how we would word it, I think. So that's what I would seek approval for.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sanders. All right, any discussion?
Do we, do we need to make sure? I mean, I know that we say that they're saying $96,000, but do we need to make sure that they're not going, I mean, because like I said earlier, regardless, I mean, I know they'd have to come back to us, but I mean, it has to be done.
They're the only ones that put in?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it has to be done, and if they're the only ones that are willing to do this job, then it's something that we probably need to make sure that we, we don't wanna be like, oh, well, you guys have to take care of the rest of it, and then like, oh, whatever, mind. I mean, I don't know what the contract says, so I don't know if that's, they're even able to do that, but.
Well, they, they have sent us a formal change order request.
Charles?
Which says the initial cost, $64,833. Then the best-case scenario, $83,000 more on top of the 64. Or the worst-case scenario was $96,000 and change. So I mean, we can get authorization, we can let them know that, you know, they've been pretty straight with us from the very beginning. I'm not, and again, I'm not endorsing or, I'm just saying, they have been honest with us through the whole thing.
Well, from what they're saying, I mean, it's something that, I mean, it's not like they're, they're coming back and saying, well, we didn't see this, I mean, it's something you don't know until you really.
And it took them like four days to come up with this stuff. Because Monday, we met with them, correct? And they, today, right before we came into meeting, they, in fact, they emailed him this change request.
And that'll start on Saturday.
They're gonna put the scaffolding in Saturday.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And they said it'd be done in two weeks, right, Jamie?
Yes.
Please, Jamie, make them more than two weeks.
A Charles question, I think. Charles, can you bid on something like this right over in the chair for quotes?
Well, I think it's an amendment to the existing bid, so I think you can, with the comptroller approving it, allow you all to change it. So you're approving the change if they're done to complete the original bid, so yes.
And that's, you said they?
We spoke with the, our auditor. Yeah, I spoke with the auditor this morning. She said as long as we presented this to you and you voted and approved it, that it will not be an audit problem.
Even though it's two different quotes?
Well, it's a change.
A change of, no.
Well, it's because of the rush that we need to be in to get it fixed. I mean, we don't have time to stop everything and re-bid the whole project. Since they've already got it, they're starting work, we need to continue. And if we don't do this, we're catching water in buckets. Correct.
And keeping the kids out of the gym again.
For however long.
Well, it's only gonna get worse, yeah.
That's what, and we were, when we were talking about what the best-case scenario, what we could do on this, because we wanna make sure that we're doing this correctly. And with the end, we don't want it, you know, come this time next year when they're finished our audit, and then all of a sudden, why'd y'all do this? You spent this money. So we made, which, we looked at it, you probably could have done it under emergency by talking to the auditor, since we had a meeting tonight. She said that you get them to approve it, you won't have any issues with the audit.
Mike, is this, is this a verbal thing or have you guys written from the auditor?
We got it over the phone.
Over the phone, that's a verbal.
Yeah. So. Well, I mean, she spoke to the main comptroller's office, though. I mean, she spoke, I mean, I feel, I feel good about it. I mean, she's, she's never led us astray before.
I don't find that, well, because we did jobs, Charles is a pretty good one, which is.
I mean, it is just a normal change. I don't see any timeframes that I overlooked, I don't see a timeframe on that. So you could approve it with the timeframe, if that's what you wanna do. If that's what they told Jamie, I'd probably put that in. We could approve it with a, at the, two weeks from Saturday when they start, is that correct? Two weeks from Saturday? Or Monday?
Monday, yeah. They, yeah, they're gonna put the scaffolding up Saturday, work would start Monday.
Mike, didn't you say they were late getting started on it, though? Before, they were supposed to have it done by the time school started, is that correct? Or?
The original, the original project with no, if they just went in and did the roof, with no work on the gutters, would have taken three days to tear it off and put a new one on.
And they started on time until they?
They said they would have it done before Monday, the 7th. And they started the previous Monday, and that was last week, and then all, and then when they came down to start the work, they found these issues and called Jamie, and we, we met with them twice over.
Well, I think if they said two weeks, I think that should be added into that.
The only issue with that, though, is if something happens, though. I mean, with construction, anything can happen. And I mean, I'm not saying they, we want them to take more than two weeks, but if it happens like that, I mean, we all know things happen, especially dealing with a school that's, you know, 45 years old. I mean, it's, that's, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, just because I'm, I see it all the time.
Keeping children out of the gym.
No, 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 I know, trust me, I'm getting the phone calls because of it. I mean, you know, but it's, it's, right. But at the same time, we need, this needs to be done, it needs to be done right. So I mean, that way, because we've done everything we have in the past, and it's got.
Y'all wrote this down, we can, I mean, the other options start all over.
No.
We have zero other. I'm not, I'm not.
I'm not saying voting down, I'm just saying, I don't, if the two weeks. I'm not saying voting down, I'm just saying, I don't, if the two weeks is not on that contract, I don't think that's.
There is another option. I mean, well, you can say, all right, stop, we're gonna rebid the whole thing and this two-week process to bid it again, and then we're probably right back.
I'm just saying, I don't think we need to add anything else. I think we should just approve it for what it is.
Approve it, let Jamie be there.
Right.
You just push them.
But don't forget about the middle school and the high school, they don't want to go there. Don't forget that. Don't be up there and forget about that.
Just worry.
All right. Any other questions about the North Stewart roof approval? All right, I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Hittu.
Yes.
Mr. Pusso.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Vegas.
Yes.
All right. Let's get that roof fixed. Item number fifteen is the director's report.
Uh, as far, we discussed this in the work session a little bit, but as far as the North Stewart air project, it's right on schedule. Like I told you, they've got all the, uh, duct work, electrical work, all that's done. Now we're just, we're waiting on the equipment to come in and, uh, have it all installed. I was talking to Owen about this project. He said he thinks, well, he knows that when it is completed and they turn those on, you'll see immediate results in that building. So, uh, you know, we're just looking forward, I'll be honest, I'm, as a director of schools, I'd be so happy when we finish that up, because it has been a known issue. And, uh, I'm glad we addressed it, I'm glad we had the S R money to do it. So far, I know we're only two full days in the school, but I think we're off to a pretty good start. Of course, there's always kinks, uh, at the beginning of the school year with buses and whatnot, but I think by next week, everybody being in the routines and we'll be, be ready to go. Very encouraged that all of our teaching positions were filled before the start of the school year. A lot of school systems are short teachers and, uh, hopefully, you two young ladies who came tonight, if y'all want to teach school, y'all are seniors, right? Y'all seniors?
We're juniors.
Juniors? Come see me in about five or six years if you want to teach. We will have teaching positions, so. And I'd just like to say, great job, we're proud of y'all. It's just awesome. We have so many good things going on in all of our schools. Uh, and this is just one example, our teachers and our students agree.
Mike, is there new, uh, is there new children, students, or is it, I think it's about the same?
I would say it's about the same. I think we're here in, I think we're like nineteen-sixty, I think that's about right. It's a little, you know, we were over two thousand when I first started. So we've seen a little bit of a dip. I think that, I think COVID had something to do with that, because we had quite a few people who went homeschool and stayed homeschool. Which I wish they wouldn't, but of course, I want them to come to our schools.
I have one more question for Jamie, please, if you don't mind. With, with, you saying you can't get parts for the air, is that creating a lot of moisture in those rooms?
Not really, not yet, no. Uh, we haven't really seen any evidence of any moisture in there yet.
So that there could be some dehumidifiers put in there if they're needed?
Yeah.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
That falls under item sixteen, if you had anything to add. If anybody else.
Sorry.
Any other board members have any?
I would forget.
Mike, you were, you were talking about bus routes and things. I mean, was that just logistical things or are we?
It's normal, knowing what bus, a kindergartner, knowing what bus to go to.
I know, I know, last time I talked to Eric, he said that we had all of them covered.
All our bus routes, I mean, we're in good shape right now with bus drivers, yes. Yes.
Happy bus drivers as well.
Yes.
I've seen them, I, and they were just very happy.
Yes, they, they did an excellent job.
All right, is anybody else have anything you're gonna bring up?
On our lunch program, is it we free-reduced or?
Okay, we have, uh, at the elementary schools, because they're, they're, they are both free breakfast and lunch. All schools get free breakfast. Middle school and high school, it's free, reduced, and paid. So we don't have, we're not where everybody gets free lunch at all. And they will be sending home, uh, the forms. If y'all know people that have those forms, please encourage them, even if they don't get, they're not eligible for it. Turn it in, it helps them out, you just gotta have.
They give them the online option too. I mean, that's, that's, makes it so much easier.
All right, if anybody got anything else? All right, I'll seek a motion for adjournment. Motion by Ms. Sanders.
Usually they'll have to seek it.
Second by Ms. Hittu. All those in favor of adjournment, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Yes, we're adjourned.